All right, the time is now seven o'clock and we'll call this meeting to order. Has this meeting been posted?
Yes, it has.
All right, roll call will show that all five board members and two student board members are present, and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I will move to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any communications this evening?
Yes, there are. Greendale Global Academy update, we submitted an application for the Tartar School Planning Grant this academic year, and we were not successful in securing funding. However, we received encouraging feedback inviting us to submit another application for the upcoming school year, giving us optimism for potential funding in 2026. Also, this Friday, we have two very fun events. One, we have the prom. Greendale celebrates Aviva Las Vegas Prom this Friday. The community is invited to the grand march, which starts at 5:00 PM. So please come and see our lovely students. This Friday, we also have professional development, where social studies and math will be working through their curriculum review process. Elementary teams will be working on backwards design and partaking in an ed camp style professional development. Middle schools showcasing their work on scaffolding and differentiation. And high school is working on a strategy called tracking while watching to increase feedback with students. In the afternoon, teachers will be working on student data and their student learning outcome goals. Also, Child Development Day screening is available for all Greendale residents who have children three to four, who are not enrolled in Greendale Schools K-4 program. Child Development Days are set, and any information that you're looking for is available on our website. That is the end of communications for today.
All right, thank you. Moving on to student updates.
Sure, so the Greendale High School Chapter of the National Honor Society recently had all of their hours due. And this year, there were hundreds of hours going towards the community because of this organization. Then AP exams have ended at Greendale High School, except for AP Psychology, which has been rescheduled nationwide due to a technology outage during the exam.
From my updates, a select group of juniors helped administration interview candidates for the associate principal position, giving them both a tour around the school and asking a select couple of questions to each of them. And then finally, Sources of Strength begins their dodgeball tournament tomorrow, tying in with the month of May, which is Mental Health Awareness Month. On top of that, several members of the Greendale community have taken part in the Active Minds Ice Bucket Mental Health Challenge, raising awareness for the cause.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. I'm not seeing anyone in the crowd tonight, so we will skip comments and move on to approving the meeting minutes from the May 5th meeting.
I move approval of the May 5th, 2025 Board Meeting Minutes as presented in Agenda Item 1.1. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. If there's no commentary, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 I'm yes, motion passes. Moving on to the financial reports, Jonathan?
The Finance Committee reviewed the financial reports at the meeting last week Wednesday. The revenues year-to-date, you'll see there's a number of funds that are above 100% of the budgeted revenue. So the Fund 21 for donations and gifts, the non-referendum and referendum debt funds, and the cooperative funds. So we're at the time of year where we should be getting a lot closer. And you can see that, that we're on track in terms of revenues year-to-date. And then on the expenditure side, the operations expenditures are at 60.87%, so that's slightly above the pace last year. So similar reason we've talked about before, there were some dollars that we set aside for health insurance, for our self-funded health last year. So we ran a little bit under in expenses at this time. So we're right about where we would expect. And then when we look at expenditures and other funds, the other two that stand out is Fund 21 for donations and gifts, and that's based on accumulated dollars over time. And those funds are individually within balance. They have enough funds collected, but it could be over multiple years. And then Fund 49, which is the Capital Projects Fund, that's related to the van purchase that we made, and we're still waiting final disbursement of dollars on that new state trust fund loan for about $45,000. And so that would actually increase revenues. And so that's why we're ahead of expenditures, because we didn't plan that at the beginning of the year. So with that, happy to answer any other questions the board has about the financials.
Any questions for Jonathan? I'm not seeing anything, so Jonathan.
Thanks.
So then we'll approve the checks and dispersments?
I move the approval of the checks and dispersments in the amount of $2,277,899.12 as presented in Agenda Item 2.3.
I second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. If anyone has anything to add, otherwise we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion passes. Moving on to new business, we need to approve the Renaissance contract renewal.
Yep, so we discussed this at the prior meeting. The main question that the board had at the prior meeting was looking into a fourth and fifth year and trying to get the vendor to provide additional agreements on cost increases to try and limit cost increases in year four and five. We had that discussion. The vendor was willing to extend the contract if we financially tied ourselves to that for year four and five. So it wouldn't just be like, we're agreeing to it at your option for year four and five. We'd financially have to lock ourselves in. And when Ms. Olson and I talked about that, we believe that there's too many unknowns when we get that far out, that that would not be in the best interest of the district, as it would limit our options as we get three, four years out into the future for, you know, for the additional cost control. So we've brought forward back the renewal for the three-year proposal, and we think that that strikes the best balance, that in years two and three, that we would be limited at the 3% cost increase. And if by the end of the three years, we would want to continue with that software, we would have to start over with negotiations on costs at that time.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve?
I move approval of the three-year Renaissance contract totaling $101,736 as presented in Agenda Item 3.1.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. If there's no questions or concerns, we will do a roll call. Kathy?
Just one real quick, so this went before the Finance Committee as well, is that right?
Yes.
Were there any questions or concerns? I know we asked you quite a few questions last week.
The Finance Committee was interested in like knowing more about the software. So I would say like Kim and I spent most of the time explaining that. But there were not concerns about bringing this forward from the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
If there's no other questions, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion passes. Moving on, approving personnel?
Yes, there is two teachers for full year 2025-2026 teacher contracts, and we're hoping that you approve them.
I move approval of the teacher appointments as presented in Agenda Item 3.2. I'll second.
Motion in a second. Do a roll call.
Yes.
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 And I'm yes, motion passes. Moving on to the 2025-2026 Board Meeting Dates and Calendar of Reports.
All right, so every year, we have a calendar of reports where we are setting out our board agendas and what we're working on at each day. So the, we typically have it on the first Monday and the third Monday of the month. And then there are some dates that that changes for holidays or for other things, such as like the annual meeting and things like that. So you all have that. Are there any discussions from the board regarding the calendar of reports that I can give feedback of the draft and then come up with a new draft that we can approve after your feedback?
Just a quick question, this was cross-referenced with the 25-26 calendar, like school days that we already approved?
Yes, the only one, only day that is not a school day is the April 6th. It's a PD day. So that is also, that is a day off for students. So if the board would want to look at a different date, that's something that I could bring back and address.
No, I just want to make sure, because last year we ran into some issues. So I just want to make sure it's cross-referenced.
No.
Thank you.
I won't be here on that April 6th. I can.
Well, we will move it just for you.
You don't have to. I will call in.
Just so you know.
Busy lady.
Already planning for 2026.
I was just going to comment, this is a little bit of a new format. I do like it, and in particular, the Panther Pride, that the logos that are indicating that. I think definitely highlights that we'll be hearing and seeing some of the great things going on in our district on those days.
And then I think we had talked about February 2nd as well, if it was needed. Did we want to?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of, February 2nd doesn't have a lot of action, and only three things that are reviewed. So we could easily move some of those to the 23rd or the 26th. So that's something that if the board would like us to look into and update the, this report with that integrated in the 26th and the 20th, 23rd, we could do that.
Well, I won't be available at the February 2nd meeting, so there you go.
You guys have a busy 2026.
I will be at Nationals with the cheerleaders.
Yeah, that's fine. We already know our schedule for next year.
Yeah. So I quote, do you want us to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, you can do that.
Do what?
Combine both February meetings into one meeting.
Yeah, I think.
So then we wouldn't meet on February 2nd?
Yeah, and then there would just be July and February would be our one board meeting. And then every other month, we'd have two.
Would that have any, I see there's a Clerk's Election Candidate Report. Will that be a problem for that?
I don't think from a state standpoint, but we might just want to decide if it's going to be the 26th or the 23rd, so it won't be too lagging information or too early.
I think the 26th would probably be preferred, just to have it done.
It's only a week difference.
And if Kristen's traveling to Nationals, then she doesn't have to worry about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we also put the candidate report on the January 26th meeting?
Yeah, so I'm hearing that the candidate report and the Clerk's election should both be on the 26th. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, that's not a time-consuming thing.
Yeah.
Oh, three months, thank you. Because we had the Board Academy, yeah, you're right. So it'd be three months. Thank you for correcting that for me, Denise.
Just clarification, October 6th, what is the conferences?
That's a week of parent-teacher conferences.
Okay.
Just so we don't have like a Panther Pride or something like that on that day, because we know kids and families will be busy or do accommodations on those days either.
I did have a question about the SIR funds. It's being listed on December 1st. I thought those were expended.
Yeah, we'll update that as well.
Okay.
That's, that's accurate. Any other, you guys are finding lots of good nuggets, this is good.
Anyone else?
Feedback? All right, then we will update the February 2nd, look at April 6th, and update the SIR funds from December 1st, and bring updated calendar reports for our next board meeting in two weeks.
Oh, sorry.
Did you have one more thing?
One more, they had the note for the Park and Rec Committee appointment in June. Don't we typically do that during the reorganization? Or is that for not board appointments?
That's not board appointments, I think that's a bigger board, the committee. Not the board, does that make sense, Brian?
Yeah, just clarifying.
The Park and Rec Board itself, yeah. All right. Thank you for that feedback, we'll get that back to you.
All right. Moving on to the proposed budget for 2025-2026, Jonathan?
Great. So there was quite a bit of information in the packets for the preliminary budget. We just posted the presentation that I'm going to share. That's just summary of some of the key information. We just posted that this afternoon. So I'll make sure that that's up on our district budget site, Business Services site, if there are people that want to read that after the fact. And then all this information will revisit in two meetings when the board reviews the preliminary budget for approval. So just want to provide update on the budget and preliminary tax levy and just next steps. And so we always ground ourselves in the values that we keep around the budget, and that's allocating our resources towards priority areas that are going to make a difference for kids. And we want to make sure that we're being good stewards to the community, and they're seeing that in how we're utilizing financial resources. And so we're thinking about our strategic plan, and that's part of our values that we use. And one of those four pillars being managing resources responsibly. So we're thinking about needs identification. So as we've gone through that, again, we've utilized budget values. So we're building a budget that puts students first. We've created a budget that's driven by data, and we've gone through many conversations over the last four months and how we've developed the budget. We've built a budget that's in line with the board's class-sized targets. It meets the curriculum needs of the district and provides equity and equality in our resources. And we've utilized outside-the-box thinking in how we've built that budget. So again, these are the class-sized targets, 4K to grade 12 that we utilized. And we maintain these targets as part of the feedback in the Community Operational Referendum that was approved in April of '24. In terms of our student population, we know that within the Village of Greendale, our public school enrollment represents 92% market share. And we're able to touch an additional portion of those students through programming that we have in field workshop. So you think about our home-school students, we're able to reach out with them and partner with them through some of that programming as well. So the vast majority of students that are within the community are engaging with our programming. We talked about class-sized targets, and so we're at the point that we're finalizing full-time equivalency, FTE, for our staffing model in this year's budget. Additional investments that we've made, so we think about key areas. So one, I talked about budget value being investments in curriculum and instruction. So we're allocating funds within the budget for the K-12 social studies adoption. For capital projects, we have a number of projects that are queued up, which include the need for two smaller classroom spaces that would be going in the sixth-grade wing at the middle school, exterior door replacements for safety and security and ongoing maintenance, repairs to the pool pit room here at the high school, drainage for the College Park Community Field, replacement of the HVAC controls at the middle school that are in need of replacement based on age, vehicle replacement within the district for our operations and our facilities team, the need to reseal tennis courts that are here at the high school, and also resealing, resurfacing parking lots within the district. And as you remember, that was one item that was deferred. We talked about the need to replace the boiler equipment here at the high school last summer. So we want to get back to that and take care of that deferred need. And then from the technology side, investments in network switches. So the board took action previously to move forward with a project that was about $188,000, and half of that would be funded through federal E-rate funds. And we've received word from USAC, which is the overarching federal organization, that we were approved for that 50-50 share. So we should be getting that federal reimbursement for that project. So that means about $94,000 is set aside within this budget for the network switches. Then safety, security cameras within the district. So you have about 300 cameras district-wide, and they last about 10 years. So that means on average, we need to be replacing 30 cameras a year just to maintain status quo that we don't have deferred maintenance there. And then investments in replacing classroom technology. So that's one thing with dollars that we've been able to set aside within the tech budget this year is being able to replace if it's new TV, replacing a dated projector. It's having speakers that function within the classroom. We've been able to target classrooms based on relative need throughout all five buildings in the district, and continuing, continuing to get ourselves on a cycle of rotation for those as well, to keep up with those needs. So in total, when we add up what's budgeted for all these areas, it's just over a million dollars within the budget. And about 10% of that is federal funding for the switch project. About 10% of that is dollars that were set aside within the Community Service Fund. And about 80% of this is through operations funds. Revenue allocation, so we're at the point that we do not have direction on what's going to happen next with the state budget. And as we've been updating the board, we continue to have conversations with our legislators, excuse me, conversations with our legislators and conversations with other districts around the state, around the board's public policy priorities to align the conversation as much as possible. And so right now, we've built in assumptions in terms of our revenue expectations of the $325 per student, which is in law, and that was just upheld by the State Supreme Court. And then what we estimate in terms of special education reimbursement. The board has advocated for at least 60% that reimbursement. But at this point, we don't know whether that's going to come to fruition. So we have a number that really reflects where that reimbursement is today just for building the preliminary budget. And so we've hit our target for right now, at this time of year, which is to bring forward a budget to the board that's in balance. So here in Fund 10, you see that we've got balanced revenues and expenditures of $38,225,008. That's utilizing the full operational referendum authority of $2.5 million. And that would leave the fund balance level essentially at the current level of 14.4%. As we've talked about previously, the board target is to keep that at 15% or higher. Special education, we've got budgeted expenditures of $7,376,030. About 60% of those budgeted revenues would come from an inter-fund transfer. So we'd utilize about $4.4 million of the $38 million we just shared on the previous slide would be utilized to pay for the portion that would not come through state and federal revenues. So the combined amount for state and federal will be about 40% is what we would target for next year. We've built in a number of assumptions in building the budget, so I mentioned the first two. We've built in projections, rolling over revenue limit based on projected enrollment. We're going to talk about tax levy. The tax levy that we've proposed in the budget would be flat from the current year level at $15,236,103. Here in the assumptions, we show equalization aid with a projected decrease of $859,000 from last year. And that's really driven by the fact that we had done a one-time prepayment of debt of $3.6 million, which boosted our state aid on a one-time basis. And so at this point, we have a conservative figure of what we project. We also have that debt prepayment that's fallen off. In terms of expense assumptions, we've built in 4% for teachers that are moving within the salary schedule and 2%, 2, excuse me, 2.5% for all other staff. For health insurance, we've projected a 5% increase. At this point in the negotiations for our renewal as of September 1, we expect to hit that 5% target. But we won't know for sure that we're able to hit that level until we get additional numbers on our stop-loss renewal later this week. But we're working to target being at or below that 5% level. We talked about investments in curriculum budget, so there's additional dollars put into the curriculum budget for the social studies renewal with the expectation that those dollars will recur in future budgets based on where we are in the curriculum cycle. There's $120,000 that we've taken out of the '24-'25 budget, because we did one-time summer stipends for staff that needed to do training for Act 20. And then it says $50,000, it means $50,000 from an SIR III grant that we had on a one-time basis to provide for the Professional Development Services for Act 20. So there was a portion for about $50,000 that was the training itself, and then about $70,000 for the stipends to pay for that time. Our OPEB allocation, so post-employment benefits, we reduced that allocation from $120,000 to $100,000 annually. We had discussion about that in the Finance Committee. And at this point, we project it'll take four years for us to fully allocate funds that we would need to make cash payments for our other post-employment benefits. So we need to add about another $400,000 after this year.
Jonathan, could I ask a question about the Act 20?
Yeah.
So I know we did offer those stipends early on for teachers. So now, as teachers are getting trained in this, are they getting professional development time? Or are they being asked to do this on their own?
Yeah, so I can answer that. So any new teacher that comes to us, we're hoping that they have been trained, because they were supposed to be trained by July of 2020, 2025. So that's our first assumption. If there are some teachers that are moving grades or something like that, we are paying for the training, and they are getting a smaller stipend for their time, but not as much as it would have been if it wasn't the first cohort. Is that accurate, Tracy?
If they are required to take, if they're required to take the training, they receive the stipend. Some of them, there are some teachers that just want that to increase their learning. They're doing that on their own.
They are, okay. I just, I think it was great that, I mean, this is obviously a mandate by the state again. And the state's not the one providing this funding. It's the district, is that right?
It was, we had a grant from DPI for a letters training for $50,000 that, and then the rest of it was funded by the district to pay people for their time.
I just feel that, you know, our lawmakers in Madison need to understand when they're asking for these things, they do need to provide the dollars to support what they're expecting out of our teachers. You know, other professions, when you do professional development, there often is a stipend or salary increase or something. And, you know, oftentimes in education, I'm seeing that it's always on the backs of the educator. So I just want to, you know, point out that I definitely am glad to hear that we're doing some sort of stipend, because that is time that they're spending getting up to speed with something that was mandated.
Absolutely, and it's really important, and it's really great training. And the training is going to have impacts on our kids for years to come. So it was really right on time.
Okay, interest revenue. So at this point, the Federal Reserve has kept interest rates pretty stable the last couple of meetings. But there's expectation that those interest rates are supposed to continue to decline over the next year. So we've taken down the expectation regarding interest revenue for next year's budget. We have pulled out the mental health grant. There's continued conversation about new mental health money being put into the next biennium. But without information on that, we've just held off budgeting for that for next year. We've made assumptions for open enrollment revenues coming in, that there'd be 279 seats filled and 65 seats out for students going out. So there'd be a net of 214 students more coming in versus out through that open enrollment program. We've made an estimate of 73 seats for the voucher system at a cost of $822,500. at a cost of eight-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. The district and the board is a pass-through. So those dollars wouldn't actually come through as funds available for operations within the district. But they essentially just become part of the tax levy for the district. So we won't have that final information until October fifteenth. But at that time, it changes the revenue limit number and is an exception. So it doesn't impact the operational funds at all. Then there was a new personal property aid that was added in the last biennium budget. This year, it provided additional spendable revenues. But there's been discussion of that being modified to provide tax relief. So we've pulled that back in terms of it being listed as spendable revenue until we understand how that's going to be utilized in the next budget and whether there'll be any modifications to that. We've set aside a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars as year two of the federal stronger connections grant. So again, that was a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant over two years. So we have about half estimated remaining. And we talked about Act Twenty. We've provided no assumption for any revenues coming back for the state reading grant. There was a survey the D P I asked us to complete recently, and we immediately completed that to provide the information. But it's dependent on a court, how the courts are going to handle the disagreement between the legislature and the governor over the partial veto by the governor of that state reading grant bill, whether or not those dollars are going to actually be allocated before the end of the biennium budget. And what's been shared with us is that if that doesn't get resolved by the end of June, those dollars just go back to the state coffers. They can't be rolled into next, the next biennium budget without new action. And so it's possible those dollars would just go away, and there would never be any reimbursement. And so we've submitted the survey, assuming that it's possible that that's going to, there'll be a ruling that'll allow those funds to be distributed. And we had spent three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand on K five, a reading curriculum in alignment with the law. So we would very much like to see some of that funding come back because we still have an outstanding loan that we need to pay off for that adoption. And then we had mentioned S R allocation. That's all fully expended, so we have nothing in terms of S R allocation within next year's budget. Before I jump to the, kind of the last part of the presentation, anything else that the board has for questions on assumptions?
Just had one thing regarding the fund balance, being at fourteen-point-four percent, I believe. And I believe, is it in our board policy that it's supposed to, that we'd like to have it at a minimum of fifteen percent?
Yes.
So that, that is just one question I've had because traditionally, in my years of serving on the board, I believe we've been closer to twenty percent with that. And I, I don't know if you can speak to that, but is that something that we're going to be able to get, you know, back at a higher level at some point?
Oh, that's a goal, to get the board back above that fifteen percent level. But based on the limitations around state funding, right? We talked about the inflationary gap and needing to go to the community to ask for additional funding, right? There was an approved deficit budget last school year that took the board below twenty percent for the first time in many years. And so we're at the point of the year that we're starting to wind down our district-level budget. And that's definitely a consideration as we're looking at any unused funds is that the board would have interest in seeing that fund balance tick up. So I don't have, we're at the point, I don't have a specific dollar figure that we would be trying to target because there's a lot that we still have to continue to invest in here at the end of the year. But that's definitely, you know, front of mind is that if we can, we want to preserve a little bit left in the budget to start to replenish that. But it would take us a considerable amount of time to get back to that twenty percent level.
Well, I think this was mentioned in the audit report this year, too.
Was me, it was definitely mentioned that the board was below that threshold because of the policy.
Yes, so.
Yep.
I think the goal is to try and work towards the fifteen percent over the next several years.
Okay. All right. We talked about board public policy priorities. Board members, myself, Dr. Mizik participated in the day at the Capitol in March. Dr. Mizik and I participated in the joint finance committee along with one of our teaching staff members back in April. And we have linked in their testimony that I provided in alignment with those board public policy priorities. We talked about tax levy that would be in balance with prior year. So at fifteen million, two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-eight dollars. In order to do that, at this point in the budget process, we have about one-point-one million that's allocated within our referendum debt fund that was allocated for prepayment. So we've used the term defeasance. We have dollars that were allocated for prepayment. And based on the board taking action last year to adjust the tax levy, the tax levy went down about one, a little over one percent. We would utilize a small portion of those additional dollars to help to just smooth the Fund Thirty-nine levy and smooth the overall tax levy in order to keep that in balance. And so that was a strategy that the board opened up by making the decision to do defeasance, defeasance over the last several years to limit how much change in variation the community would see within the tax levy. And I know that was something that we communicated with discussions of the operational referendum, was trying to have strategies and options for the board so that the board would be able to follow through with that commitment to keep that tax levy stable even if the operational referendum was approved. So other things that we do to manage the budget and find savings, utilizing cooperative agreements, state contracts, sharing services with the village, sharing services with the Franklin School District, the self-funded work with our health insurance. And we will get final numbers on that shortly. We've talked about prepayment of debt and refinancing of debt that we've done. And then, future planning with the Village of Greendale. And the community should be seeing that in full flourish right now with the community center park and the new playground, what's being done at J C. Things are very much aligned. And we were able to find additional savings in how we did those projects by working together. And we've been planning together for multiple years. So we want to continue to build on those partnerships. Mentioned the project that we're doing at College Park and the drainage for that field. That was in partnership with the village. And we were able to leverage their bidding power to get a much lower price on doing that project. So with the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, continue to maintain the budget values. We want to show that we're good stewards of funds for this community. Invest in programming that's data-driven. We've provided a balanced preliminary budget to the board of thirty-eight-point-two million for operational budget and a flat tax levy. And we continue to work to push the board public policy priorities by our legislators. So it just lays out timeline. The first conversation regarding preliminary budget is here this evening. And then, in two meetings, the board would take it up for approval so that we would have a budget in place by July one. And that's best practice, so that we have an understanding of budget, even though we will get additional numbers once we get into the fall. And then just dates for annual meeting and final approval for the budget in October. So with that, be happy to take any questions that the board has right now regarding the preliminary budget.
Just off the bat, I'd like to thank you for your work with this and just making sure and just even teaming and jumping together with the village to lower costs and kind of bid together. It's really appreciated. I did want to just make sure and clarify that our tax levy we are levying is going to be level. But we have no control over the vouchers that could add or increase that levy if that's the case, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Jonathan.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to call an audible and remove the open enrollment update from the.
Yeah, we're going to table that till next.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
So then we will just jump into Kathy's legislative update.
All right, there's several things I'm going to just go through. So first of all, there's a bill, S B Senate Bill One Seventy, and this is the bill on rehiring retired and newens. Two committees held a public hearing on these bills. And the Senate Committee on Transportation and Local Government met on Tuesday, May sixth to hear Senate Bill One Seventy, which is a bill allowing W R S annuents, annuents, am I saying that, annuitants, annuitants, to return to work without suspending their annuity. And I believe this is because of the teacher shortage that they're trying to find ways to bring some retired teachers back. The bill is similar to past proposals that allows a W R S annuitant to continue to receive their annuity for sixty months, which requires employers to pay into ETF equal to what the annuitant would have paid into ETF had they foregone their annuity. And it also still will retain the seventy-five-day break in service. So that is before them right now. There was something about mobile hotspots. I don't know if we do this, if it's necessary to bring it in. Do we do mo, mobile hotspots for students? So I'm going to skip that one. There was the high-cost special ed aid versus a general special education aid. And this one here, as budget negotiations continue to ramp up between the governor and the legislator, discussions have been gone over with increases in special education aid. Some in the legislature have begun to discuss increasing high-cost special education reimbursement aid as opposed to general special education aid. Increasing high-cost reimbursement would be of great benefit to eligible special ed students. However, school districts have been asking for the special ed. As we know, the increase of categorical, categorical aid to sixty percent reimbursement adds some sufficient. I found this one interesting with lunches, and maybe our student board members want to comment. This one here is a bill regulating school meal ingredients. And there was a bill that was to change which student, no, that's not it, hold on. I can't see the number here. Here it is, A B Senate Bill or Assembly Bill Two Twenty-Six is a bill to ban certain ingredients from being provided by schools through the National Lunch Program or the Federal School Breakfast Program. These names are kind of interesting, brominated vegetable oil, potassium bromate, propo, para, you know this, you're, you're a pharmacist, and then red dye number three. So these are things that they do not want to have in school lunches that are provided by the national government. But this does not affect if we have, like, private vendors bringing in additional food items. So I don't know if you guys have any comments on that?
I do not feel qualified to, to comment on those.
I just found that interesting. I hope they're not feeding that to our students. And then, there is a state, the state will still have a four-point-three-billion-dollar surplus, but it will take in less than, less revenue in twenty-five through twenty-seven. And the Legislative Fiscal Bureau projected that the state will finish the twenty-three, twenty-five budget with a more than four-point-three-billion surplus, as I mentioned, which is a slight improvement over its January estimate, but now expects lower tax collections over the following two-year period. The net impact is three-hundred-and-thirty-five million less in tax revenue for the capital to play with as lawmakers and the governor try to reach an agreement in the twenty-five, twenty-seven budget. And then there was one on, this one is Act Twelve, and it has to do with safety. New report mandate guidance on crime statistics. And the purpose of this statute is to collect data on state and local law violations that occur on school property. I don't know if we ever get that in our safety reports, but that would be kind of interesting. And that is it.
All right, thank you. Moving on to board committee updates, anyone with an update?
Just a reminder that the Greendale Education Foundation is hosting People at the Milkman Game on Saturday, May thirty-first. So if you want to go and support the Education Foundation, which does a lot for the community and a lot for our schools, tickets are available.
CISA One Annual Meeting is tomorrow, so we'll have an update next time.
That's an exciting meeting. Kathy, want to tell us about your appointment to the WASB Regional Director?
Well, I expressed interest over the last couple of months. Brett Hyde was previously serving in that role, and he has decided not to run for reelection. His term would be up this coming fall. So there was a period in which you could apply for that particular regional director seat. And I did express interest. You had signed off as our board president. And I was notified about a week and a half, two weeks ago that I was selected to be the regional, Region Eleven interim director until our fall regional meeting. So I'm really excited about that. Vicky McCormick, who was a previous board member, served in that role prior to becoming the president of WASB. And I just feel it's going to open up some opportunities to have our district connect with other districts across the state. So I appreciate your support and, you know, me doing that. You had a hundred-and-fifty characters that you had to write why they should select you. And so, you know, I'm not always at a loss for words, so I had to make that very, I, mine was a hundred-and-forty-eight, actually. But.
I'm surprised it wasn't a hundred-and-fifty right on the dot, Kathy.
I tried. I was going to put thank you, but I thought that was weird. So anyways, but I, I'm super excited for this opportunity. Brett Hyde is a great friend and a mentor to me. Larry Dukes from Peewaqui just got elected into that role for district, or for Region Fifteen. So he's always been a good friend and a mentor to me. So I've got great people I'm working with. This interim period will give me an opportunity to see how that fits my busy lifestyle. But I do know that the meetings that they do are typically on Fridays and Saturdays, go into the weekend, which I often have that time available. They meet like every other month in Madison. So I'm super excited for that opportunity and, you know, appreciate the support.
Yeah, and just for people who aren't familiar with WASB directors do, it's a board of directors, and they charge with the overall management affairs funds and property of the association. And we're really excited that you're doing that for us and representing Greendale and, and our region. So thank you so much, Kathy.
Congratulations.
And Dan Ross Miller, you know, is the executive director. So just like we oversee Dr. Mizik on this board, the region, regional directors oversee the executive director for our association.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you, Kathy, congrats. Moving on to board professional development, does anyone have anything to add? No? Do you want to?
Oh. So Rob and I attended a conference a couple of weeks ago, hosted by the Wisconsin Institute of Law and Liberty on school policies. And it was very interesting to hear not only some of the projections about what's going to happen, but also some of the struggles that other districts are dealing with. And kudos to Jonathan for hosting a fantastic session on school finance and explaining it in a way that people in the room could understand. And just really making sure that people, my takeaway from that was that there are very serious things, serious consequences that are on the line for school funding right now. And districts need to do what we're doing, prioritize, be very cautious and judicious with their dollars, and, and really keep a focus on the kids. So that, those are my takeaways from your presentation, and congratulations. It was a, it was a full room, and it was a great conversation.
Where was that held?
On WAC Shaw.
Yeah, the Marriott.
Yeah.
And then, I think one of the biggest ones was the presentation on social media for kids. The, how would we explain it, the horrors of.
Don't give your kids social media.
Yeah.
An hour and a half, don't give your kids social media.
Yeah.
And just talking about different policies that boards can adapt and, and whatever, so.
Yes.
It was scary.
Yes, and there was also a good session on. There was also a good session on superintendents.
Yeah.
Finding new superintendents, keeping superintendents, but obviously that doesn't really pertain to us. But it was pretty interesting to hear some of the trials and tribulations that boards go through when they're forced to look for a new superintendent, so.
We had great Greendale representation on that presentation, too, both Mark Kapocius and Dr. Bill Hughes were part of that conversation.
Yeah. So it was a good opportunity to learn and a very interesting topic, so.
Thank you, guys, for attending.
Yeah. Did you have something?
Just going to mention, I talked to you about it, Rob, and Christie's, I believe, going to put it in the DU, but the summer, I'm going to get it wrong, the Summer Learning Symposium is going to be taking place on July 11th and 12th in Stevens Point. There, Charles Franklin from Arquette University will be the keynote for the dinner on Friday night. And I can't remember his name right now, but there is a gentleman that is nationally renowned who will be coming to do the keynote on Saturday morning. There are several sessions in there for board presidents. There's, it's a leadership opportunity, so hopefully people can do that. I'm hoping I'll be recovered from surgery by then and I'm thinking I'm going to attend it. So anybody else, we could maybe carpool.
Fantastic. All right, thank you. Board calendar.
Yeah, so this Friday is Greendale's High School Prom. Monday is a holiday, it's Memorial Day. Hope everyone has a lovely Memorial Day and celebrates our veterans. Then we also next week have middle school concerts on Tuesday and Wednesday. And then if you want to support College Park, they have a dine-out at the hot, up the dog house in the Beer Garden. And there is a talent show at the high school on Friday. So lots of fun things happening in the Greendale family.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Moving on, additional comments from visitors? I have not seen any. So we will adjourn and come back June 2nd. Nick, is that your last meeting, June 2nd?
Oh, yeah.
All right. One more. All right.
He'll probably come for citizen comments while he's in college.